That came through. Some of the damage that had occurred, it ripped the roof right off the entire facility, screws and all, just ripped it out. Destroyed the carports, any attachments, sheds, snap trees. So there was substantial damage for 60 mile an hour winds. So this one here was rather close. As you could see, it removed it. It removed the entire roofing system but left the insulation. And that's what saved his structure actually from getting substantial damage. They have a tarp now to secure it. The insulation, as I indicated, stayed intact. But the remainder of the roof and carport has been placed in the backyard.
And I walked out, tried to open the sunroom door, and the rain was going this way. So I shut the sunroom door, stepped back a few feet, and it went pop. One big boom. That was it.
We realize that the winds may pick up tomorrow. So we'll be back out here again, checking the structures again to make sure everybody's safe. But this one here, we'll keep an eye on just to make sure it's, uh, it's safe for the occupants to be inside.
Welcome to the opening day of the Route 20 PCPT bus route.
All right. One, two, three, cut. Hey.
We're here at the Health Department, which is also where the Mike Fasano Hurricane Shelter is. We're gonna make this route work for the people.
The biggest thing the Shady Route does, it provides a much-needed service into a very underserved area that, that we have not even been there before. We're heading all the way down the Denton Peace Road, heading up Shady Hills, going up Hicks, hitting two high schools. We're hitting a lot of different housing areas in there. There is medical places and connecting to other places that we didn't even have before.
We've come a long way. People are recognizing Pasco. And to have this shelter here, to have the transportation that's available to our residents where people can come, means a lot. A key component to having an evacuation center where those who live in areas that when they need to evacuate, if we get, we get a major storm. And of course, that bus stop will play a major role in bringing those people here as well.
We have one route between the two counties. This is the second route. So in essence, we're doubling the effectiveness of our transit between Pasco and Hernando County.
We have roughly 1,700 individuals who come for client services here at the Fasano Shelter. Now, that's really covering both counties. That's Hernando and Pasco County. We believe that the bus stop is gonna be a key feature in being able to make sure we have people come to the facility, get the nutritional services.
Currently, our patients have to walk from the nearest bus stop to get here. And so having a bus stop right outside of our complex at our facility is just wonderful.
Vincent House is a rehabilitation program for people with mental illnesses. Many of our members ride the bus. And we're kinda isolated out here, our location. So it's really important that we have this bus here.
It is a jewel, a gem, because public transportation for many of our folks who don't have a vehicle, to get around, get back and forth to work, and to come to Vincent House, which helps them stay in recovery, is critical.
This route, though a small portion, is a big deal.
I wanna say I'm very excited for this route. We've been waiting for it for a long time.
I wanna say thank you to our PCPT team. Without them, this would never have happened.
If you qualify as a special needs client, your emergency go-kit should include everything you need to maintain your care regimen and optimal health. This includes all your medications. Once a disaster is declared, Floridians may obtain an extra prescription refill even if you have recently filled it. That's important since you should bring 10 days of medications to the shelter. Ideally, bring the original pill bottles, since it has your name, the prescription number, the medication name and dosage, as well as the names of both the pharmacy and your physician. If you need special food or medical supplies, bring those with you. Have enough oxygen to get you to and from the shelter safely. And don't forget, bring your concentrator or nebulizer. While packing, grab your glasses, hearing aid, and batteries, wound care supplies, prosthetics, walker or wheelchair, along with a pair of socks and closed-toe shoes. It's very important to carry copies of contact information with you as well. Include the names and numbers of family members, doctors, your pharmacy, home health provider, and your oxygen supplier. Bring your insurance card, your photo ID, and a copy of your care plan. If you have a do-not-resuscitate form, pack the yellow original form. The most important thing you can bring is your caregiver. A cot will be assigned to you, so ensure the person taking care of you brings their own small air mattress. Bring supplies for your service animal if you have one, and watch our pet-inclusive kit video so you know what to pack for them. Planning and preparing ahead of time can help lower your stress level and will keep you organized. That allows you to remain healthy during an emergency. There is no bedside nursing care at the shelter, but there will be assistants available. Planning on your part ensures a smoother stay, so pack that special needs go-kit now. If you have any questions, call the Pasco County Emergency Management Staff by dialing
Hi, I'm Brian Taylor with Pasco County Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources. While many of you have been staying at home helping stop the spread of COVID-19, we've been using this unique time working in all our parks to enhance your experience. Let's take a look. On your next visit to J.B. Starkey Wilderness Park, you can walk the new Shell Path leading to the beautiful new Bird Blind. And in Key Vista Nature Park, you'll see how grant funding made it possible to protect the gopher tortoises as we wrapped up this important habitat restoration project. You'll also notice big improvements at the Pet Cemetery in Land O' Lakes, where our team has worked to spruce up the space, resetting headstones and removing debris. We've knocked one out of the park for our athletes with major improvements to baseball, softball, and soccer fields in several of our county parks. And our team members are taking a paintbrush to almost everything, including picnic tables, concession stands, even our rec centers. There is no doubt that from trimming trees and repairing fences to pressure washing and building new gardens and playgrounds, you will see big changes on your next visit. And a huge thank you to our Parks Team for stepping up to help the children of frontline workers by hosting a critical day camp when they had no other place to go. When we reopen, we hope your experience is even better than it was before. We can't wait for you to see what we've done. For more information on our parks, programs, and services, visit us online at mypasco.net.
Do we have everybody? How about the folks who are in on the second? So Mr. G, Mr. Hobbs, Ms. Feeny. Yes. That is for Meadow Oaks, that's PC5.
So I get to get my first vaccine shot tomorrow.
Can start.
Unmute the microphone.
All right. Did you say we're ready?
Ready.
Okay. If we're ready, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. So if we will stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll have the roll call.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Roberto Saez.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. All right. And I wanna read the proof of publications, please.
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 17th, 2021, February 24th, 2021, March 10th, 2021, and by certified mailouts and site postings.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have minutes to approve?
Nope, not today.
No minutes, okay. Okay, so I'd like to welcome everybody, whether you're here personally in attendance or at the kiosk. Planning Commission is appointed by the County Commission. We meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency. We hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezoning and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the procedures of our meetings, they are as follows. We have items that will be, may be continued, and it's been our custom to approve a request for continuance by an applicant or the staff unless there are extenuating circumstances, such as the convenience of the affected parties. We have consent items where we have not received letters of objection from the public or from the staff. Those items are placed on the consent agenda and will be read item by item. If there's an item that we read that you wish to be pulled from consent agenda, notify us either by raising your hand or through the public address system, and that item will be pulled for discussion. Absent objections, those items which remain on the consent agenda will be voted on at one time and approved. Applicants will be, applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation, and concerned citizens will have three minutes to state their concerns. Following the presentation, the applicant will have time to rebut or respond to the questioners. If there's been a request at least 24 hours before the meeting for extra time, such extra time may be granted, subject to approval of the chairman. And do we have extra time requested?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have a request for extra time. It's item P6.
Okay.
You've provided, you've given 30 minutes of time.
Okay. So for any of you who have phones or anything that would make a noise, this is a good opportunity to silence those phones. I don't guess people have pagers anymore. They find silence. So before we start the regular meeting, we're open for public comment on items not appearing on the agenda but pertinent to this body. Is there anyone who is here for public comment?
Let me check with the kiosk. Is everyone, anyone at the kiosk on an item that is not on the agenda today?
Does that mean no response?
That means we're gonna check.
Oh.
We're gonna physically check and walk out.
Okay.
Well, Denise, Denise, you probably need to be clear about your request because we have two walk-on items that are technically not on the agenda, so...
Yes, I discussed that with the kiosk folks earlier today, so they're aware that there are folks here for an item that is not on the agenda but does have a walk-on continuance request. So I'm aware of those, but I'm not sure if there's anyone else for the public comment section.
Okay.
Hi, no one is here for general public comment.
Okay. Thank you. So there are no walk-on items then?
There are two walk-on agenda items for continuance.
Okay. So you wanna go through those, please?
Did you wanna swear folks in first?
I don't think, didn't, I thought she just said there was no one here to speak on them.
There are, there are several folks out there to speak on items, and I will check and see if our WebEx participants have logged on on those items as well.
Okay. And if so, then we'll just swear them as they come up to speak? Does that work? Okay.
That's fine.
Or you can swear them all in generally now and just confirm they were sworn as they come up to speak.
Okay. We can do that, too. David has the best idea usually, so let's go with what he says.
Okay, so if there's anybody...
We're gonna have everybody lined up to be sworn in.
If anybody is out there to speak, if you could all raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
That sounds like a strong yes.
Okay, so I will read the walk-on continuance item.
Okay.
But again, we do have comment and... But again, we do have comment, and I believe we'll discuss how that'll work out in a future meeting.
Okay.
So it's item PDD 210327 for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. It's an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps, map 2-15 and sheet 20, changing from res one, residential one-dwelling unit per gross acre to PD Plan Development on approximately 20.35 acres of property located at the intersection of Ridge Road and Tangled Drive. The staff is requesting a continuance to April 22nd, 2021, LPA meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, so before we get into this particular item, I need to recuse myself from voting on this one, so I'll pass the gavel to the Vice Chairman, and I'll reserve my right to comment if need be. Is that right, David?
Well, if you're just declaring a conflict, I think you can just pass the gavel and file interest form with the clerk.
Okay, I filled out the form.
We do have the form filled out, and the clerk does have it in her possession.
So you probably need to go and pass the gavel to Mr. Girardi so he can conduct this continuance.
Okay, done.
Got it, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. So, Mr. Girardi, since this matter was not noticed as a continuance on the agenda, I do have some concerns that the public had no way of knowing that it was being continued, so for that reason, I think you should allow public comment. However, if you allow public comment, it needs to be with the understanding that they will not have the right to speak at a future public hearing where this is discussed. Summing up, if they want to speak now, I think you should allow it, but they speak again when the item comes back to you. I would also note that the item really has to be continued because it was not properly noticed in the newspaper, so this is something that the Planning Commission has no choice but to continue.
Okay, thank you, David. Just to make sure everybody understands fully, I mean, you're welcome to give testimony now, but just understand that you cannot, if you speak today, you cannot speak again when this item is heard again on April 22nd. So that being said, is there anybody on WebEx or at the kiosk that wishes to speak?
We're trying to confirm that now.
While we're figuring that out, I do have a request to read an item into record. I did check with the person, and perhaps David can weigh in on this one. I did check to see if the person wanted to wait for this item to be read into record, but I did not hear back from that applicant.
Okay, the two citizens here to speak on Tanglewood wish to wait until the...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Regarding the email, if we have no indication one way or the other from the person who sent it as to whether they want to wait, I think in the caution, you should go ahead and read it into the record today.
If someone can please set the timer for three minutes. So this email, this letter is from Kenneth Skelly of 7031 Tanglewood Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34654. It has come to my attention that the Pasco County Planning Commission is considering a proposal for the rezoning of approximately 20-acre lot near the corner of Ridge Road and Tanglewood Drive in Newport Ritchie. The proposed rezoning is to allow for the construction of a low-income apartment complex consisting up to 230 units. This would possibly bring 1,000 people to the immediate area. What impacts does this have? I would seek the following clarification for justifying rezoning consideration. The Tanglewood East subdivision is recognized through existing deed restriction that all Tanglewood East dwellings must provide for one acre of land per dwelling. If so recognized, how can rezoning be considered? What research or data has been performed to recognize the need and specifically the location of the proposed rezoning? The Tanglewood East subdivision would experience negative impacts through such a rezoning and rental property construction. Transportation demands would have vehicular traffic increase significantly through our subdivision, including construction equipment. What environmental impact studies have been performed to demonstrate that such construction would not adversely affect the surrounding area? Why was this particular parcel selected? Are there any other parcels that would be as conducive to consideration? Respectfully, Kenneth Skelly.
All right, thank you, Denise.
Mr. Chair, in an abundance of caution, the applicants on WebEx, can we just get her to confirm she's going to save her rebuttal for the actual hearing?
Yes, so the applicant want to speak at this time?
I believe it's Ms. Willhite, is that right, Denise?
That's correct.
Yes, I'm coming. I have to wait to be recognized as a panelist, so it just took a few minutes here. This is Barbara Willhite, 5327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, Florida, for the applicant. One, we are in agreement with staff's request for continuance, and we will save any rebuttal to the hearing on April 22nd.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. So if there's nobody else to speak at this point, we need a motion for continuance?
Motion to continue.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion in a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Saez.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray is recusing himself.
Right, stay.
Okay, so the following item is the other walk-on item, PDD 210329. This is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2006, Shady Hills and Calan K Drive, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps, 2-15 and sheet 21, changing from res one, residential one-dwelling unit per gross acre to comm commercial on approximately four acres of property located on the northeast corner of Shady Hills Road and Calan K Drive, and the recommendation is to continue to April 22nd, local planning agency at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
So, Mr. Chair, so, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman Gray, this would be the prior item. This was not noticed on the agenda as a continuance. I think you need to see if there's anybody here to the item.
Okay, thank you. So do we have anybody available to speak on this item?
We don't have anyone at the public comment kiosk to speak on the item, nor have we received any emails in opposition or letters or anything of that sort, and the applicant is virtually present.
So this is, we're asking for continuance of this item, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, April 22nd, 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Does the applicant have any objection to continuing?
It's Ms. Willhite.
Okay. Ms. Willhite, are you still with us?
Yes, this is Barbara Willhite. They turn me off and on as a panelist, but it takes a second, so I apologize. Barbara Willhite, the applicant, has no objection. It's the staff's request for a continuance until April 22nd.
All right, very good. So we have no one here to speak against it. The applicant has no objection to continuance. Do I hear a motion to continue?
Jamie Girardi, so moved.
Second.
Peter Hansel, second.
A motion in a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Not all in favor? Signified by roll call.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Saez.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay, just double checking, did we already get the proof of publication for these items that are coming up?
Yes, she did read those, yes.
Great, thank you so much. Following item is PC one, it's PDD 217504. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Life Church MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, Victorious Life Assembly of God, Inc. It's a rezoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow 122 single-family detached residential homes. This comes with a request for continuance to April 22nd, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
All right, is the applicant present? Is there anyone here to speak against it?
We have no one that has been, that has signed up to speak at the kiosk, nor anyone that has sent emails or letters.
Okay, so if we have no opposition, the applicant is not present?
The applicant is not present on WebEx, but they specifically stated they would not be joining on WebEx.
So is there, do I have a motion to continue?
Jamie Girardi, so moved.
Second, Chris Williams.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, signified by roll call.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Saez.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Following item is PC two. It's a variance request, PDD 212089, 76-store WC, Pong Lee Brandy Wine Asset Management. It's for a reduction in the required minimum setback of a street entrance for vehicles for a service station from a residential lot from 75 feet to 15 feet in a C2 general commercial district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, and is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Is there anyone here to object?
We have not received any letters of objection, nor has anyone at the public comment kiosk. There are letters of support that are attached to your agenda packet.
Okay. So if not, I guess we can continue to the next one?
The next item is PC three. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Salem Media, MPUD, Salem Radio Properties. It's a rezoning request from AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow 325 residential units on approximately 77.21 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Okay, and is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
And anyone here to object?
We have no letters of objection, nor do we have any emails, and there is no one at the public comment kiosk on this item.
All right, and anything from the dais? If not, let's move to the next one.
Shall I move on to the next one?
Yes, uh-huh.
Following item is PC four. It's PDD 217509 in the name of Connerton Villages Three and Four, MPUD Master Plan Unit Development. Lennar Homes LLC. It's for a rezoning request from AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow the development of a maximum of 2,160 dwelling units, 150,000 square feet of retail, a minimum of 50,000 square feet of office in parcel D1, 100,000 square feet of other office, a charter school with up to 765 students, an 80-acre district park, and seven acres for a library-fire emergency medical services facility in the Connerton Villages, Village Three and Four, MPUD. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, is there anyone here to speak for the applicant?
The applicant is virtually present. On this item, I have two things to state. There are, there have been several ex parte communications between the applicant and the different Planning Commission members on the Planning Commission. Those have been submitted to the clerk's office, so they have that for their file.
Okay.
Additionally, on this item, I do have a letter to be read into record.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and do that, and then the applicant, if the applicant has a comment?
So Denise, if you think you're going to be reading an objection to the record, I really think it should be pulled from consent.
All right, let's just pull it there. Okay, so that's PC four?
That's correct, PC four.
Okay, so we'll pull that from consent. We'll come back to it.
The following item, PC five, is a zoning amendment. That's PDD 217529. It's in the name of Meadow Oaks MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District, substantial modification for Meadow Oaks Development, LC, and others. It's a rezoning request from an R1 rural-density residential district, R4 high-density residential district, and AC agricultural district, and an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to a Master Plan Unit Development District to add acreage and allow substantial changes to the master plan and conditions of approval on approximately 63.23 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
All right, and is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present. On this item, we're going to check to see if there is a person that has signed up to speak who is with the Meadow Oaks Master Association, so we may have to pull this one as well.
Okay.
There is someone here to speak on this item.
Okay, so we'll pull this one from consent, all right.
So that, then that ends your consent agenda.
Okay, so we have the remaining items. Can I have a motion to approve the remaining items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with items PC two and PC three.
Second, Chris Poole.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signified by roll call.
Jamie Girardi.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Saez.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay, so back onto regular items. We're adding PC four and PC five, right?
Correct.
Four, five, and six, we heard on regular items, okay?
Just going to have that I be allowed to share my screen so that I can pull up the PowerPoint.
Okay.
And if you would, if you would promote Tammy Snyder also.
Okay. So on item PC four, are we ready to move on that one?
I'm not going to bring up the PowerPoint on that one.
Okay.
I guess I can start. It's PDD 217509, Connerton Villages Three and Four, MPUD. This is the affected area for the rezoning, several parcels. The request is to rezon the subject parcels from AC Agricultural District to an MPUD to allow the development of 2,160 dwelling units, 150,000 square feet of retail, 50,000 square feet of office in parcel D1, and 100,000 square feet of other office, also 765 student charter school, 80-acre district park, and seven acres for a library-fire and emergency medical services facility in parcel D2. and seven acres for a library, fire, and emergency medical services facility in parcel D2. The applicants also state that the desire is to create a better connected community with various types of mobility options throughout, a pad-ready employment site, local serving retail, higher-density, single-family attached units, downtown pedestrian-oriented open spaces, community gathering spaces, and other amenities to serve the neighborhood's residents and employees in all of Connerton. They feel that it's an authentic live-work-play environment. Here is the master plan showing the different areas throughout the community. This is the connectivity plan showing how all the areas are interconnected. The land is, that, the land that we're talking about today is currently vacant. It's been evaluated and deemed compatible with the surrounding zoning districts and current future land uses. The Connerton Newtown Future Land Use Policy 5.2.1 permits the MPUD to include a connectivity plan to set forth specific standards and criteria of a mixed-use trip production method project that differs from the LDC yet meets the intent of the LDC. The LDC specifies that variations from the code may be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission, MBCC, during the public hearing held on any application for an MPUD zoning amendment. The applicant is seeking several variations from LDC 901.13E standards for compact development areas. Specifically, 901.13E, gridded streets and pedestrian pattern with mid-block pedestrian crossing, 901.13E1A sub-paragraph five, on-street parking for single-family dwellings, small lots for townhomes, proximity to trails and alternative vehicle multimodal paths reduces traditional vehicle reliance. 901.13E sub-six, sub-paragraph six, minimum of 6.0 dwelling units per gross acre in downtown and adjacent to the district park. LDC 901.13E1A sub-paragraph seven, downtown area exceeds mixed-use trip production methods, minimum of 22 square feet per residential unit. LDC 901.13E1A, sub-paragraph eight, mobility hubs with amenities to be neighborhood centers. In addition to the variations previously mentioned, the applicant also provides the following instances where the MPUD and connectivity plan meet or exceed the standards of the remaining components of Section 1 901.13E standards for compact development areas. Specifically, 901.13E1A, sub-paragraph two, interconnected street network, pedestrian-friendly multimodal elements. LDC 901.13E1A, sub-paragraph three, comprehensive connectivity plan with trails and non-vehicular options, connecting neighborhoods, downtown and district park. Connectivity hubs are required throughout the master plan, and each will include a set of amenities to incent non-vehicular trips. Some examples include trailhead access with wayfinding boards, water refill stations, bike repair stations, community share bikes, restroom, outdoor gathering, event space, and/or electric vehicle charging stations. 901.13E1A, sub-paragraph four, buffering. Conditions of approval refer to cited Land Development Code section and will meet or exceed the requirements. 901.13E1B, sub-paragraph one through sub-paragraph five, land uses. Comprehensive connectivity plan, mixed-use requirements in conditions of approval, library, fire station, charter school, civic park gathering spaces, varied housing types, shared parking facilities. Downtown shall be a minimum of 40 acres. To further promote mudroom and walkability, self-storage facilities shall be incorporated into mixed-use buildings, and regional serving uses and gas stations are prohibited. The proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 400, subsection 402.2 zoning amendments, Master Plan Unit Development District, and with the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. We recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, thanks Denise. Okay. So the applicant is present, virtually?
The applicant is virtually present.
And there are some others to speak on this as well?
We have an email in opposition to the item, so I can read that into record.
Okay. Why don't we read that?
Denise, you might want to just make sure the applicant doesn't want to...
Mr. Chairman, this is Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA 109 North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida. Have been sworn. If we don't have any other folks at the kiosks who are there to object today, what I would prefer to do is have Denise read the email that I'm aware of concerning this matter, and I'll make a very brief rebuttal, but I really don't believe there's a lot to argue about here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hobby. Why Denise?
If you would give me three minutes?
Okay, this email is from Rob Park, 9614 Aaron Cut Off, Land O' Lakes, Florida. Good day, this project today looks nothing like the project that was approved 20 years ago. Over the years, there has been one variance after another, and none of the proposed downtown areas were built. The variation request addresses that, that and reads like a fairy tale and sounds like a dreamland. Objective 8.5, the language of meeting and exceeding the comprehensive plan objectives and policies, plus the location of the downtown not being driven by proximity to arterial roadways, is quality planning. However, this does not address the current residents in the area. Issues of congestion, light, and noise are not mentioned. The proposal does not say one thing about blending in with Bahia Acres across the street, which has generations of residents. I have been there 40 years, and I am the relatively new guy on the block. I asked what, what the 40-foot right-of-way on the west side of Aaron Cut Off was going to be used for. I have not received an answer. But I would speculate that the right-of-way will be for turn lanes. To have less of an impact on the already established neighborhood, please utilize future, to have less of an impact on the already established neighborhood, please use future Collier Parkway. Now for the entrance rather than later. In addition, construction traffic could utilize future Collier Parkway and not interfere with Aaron Cut Off, which seems to be accommodating arterial traffic. It is this committee's civic duty to ensure all citizens enjoy vibrant and open spaces, not just new construction. Thank you, Rob Park.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Hobby.
Mr. Chairman, again, this is Clark Hobby, again, I'll keep it short. So for, for Planning Commission's benefit, Mr. Park has objected at several hearings about his concerns about Aaron Cut Off, which is a county collector and it morphing into a larger-scale road. But for Planning Commission's benefit, when Connerton was approved originally over 20 years ago, it included a 300-acre downtown area in this area that included a very large community college and over a million square feet of regional commercial. So basically, it was gonna have them all. What we've done with this project now, in addition to a lot of other wonderful things that will bring non-automobile dependency to the fore and include a bunch of trail systems and really neat things that will reduce automobile dependency, is we've right-sided the downtown Connerton area. Most of the uses that Mr. Park is concerned about are about a half-mile from Aaron Cut Off and really won't have an effect on, on those people on the east side of Aaron Cut Off. And moreover, the uses are really only commer, community-serving retail-sized now. So it's going to be a bunch of local-serving retail that will benefit the Connerton community, but will not be of regional nature. Other than that, we're really excited, we've worked with staff for two and a half years to get to this point, and the community plan and connectivity plan that we've created, I believe is gonna be one we'll all be proud of for generations. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
All right, are there any questions?
Yes.
There was a mention of 40-foot right-of-way, what was that concern about?
I'll be on, Mr. Williams, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure what he's talking about. The same right-of-way requirements that relate to Connerton that were in the 2015 NOPC for the DRI have been carried forward on all of the right-of-ways. So nothing has changed there, and with regard to Collier Parkway, we have specifically not changed the trip thresholds that were in the 2015 approval. So if my client goes over those thresholds, we'll be building Collier as originally intended.
I was just curious if that right-of-way had anything to do with Aaron Cut Off, or if that was internal, but it doesn't sound like you're sure what, what he's referring to.
I don't, I don't believe we're changing anything with regard to the right-of-way regardless.
Okay.
All right, sure, any other questions? All right, so if not, your motion?
Jamie Girardi, I'll move for approval.
I'll second it, Peter Hansel.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, let's signify by roll call.
Jamie Girardi.
Hi.
Peter Hansel.
Hi.
Roberto Saez.
Hi.
Christopher Poole.
Hi.
Chris Williams.
Hi.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Hi.
Okay, now we'll move on to item PC five.
Jessica Cole with the Planning and Development Department. Item PC five is memorandum number PD 21 7529, in the name of Meadow Oaks Development, LC, New Life Ministries, and River Ridge Homes Incorporated. For a change in zoning from R1 rural density residential district, R4 high-density residential district, AC agricultural district, and MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to Master Plan Unit Development District. I'm sorry, Denise, I apologize.
Sorry, it's just...
No, you're fine.
So that, that big box is not in the middle for you?
You can go to the next slide, please, thank you. This is a picture of the, I'm sorry, if you could go back one. There we go, sorry. This is a picture of the current aerial. The property is located in northwest Pasco County, on the south side of Hudson Avenue, approximately 1.1 miles east of Colony Road. Next slide. This is the picture of the current zoning in the area. Next slide. And this is an image of the future land use, we jumped one, two, three. No, you're okay, it's just touchy. You're fine. The subject site consists of platted residential subdivisions and undeveloped lands. The subject site is both in the north and central market areas, but outside of the rural areas and outside of the urban expansion areas. This request includes addition of acreage to the existing MPUD. Also included is the creation of tract U for development of 65 single-family detached units. Creation of tract U, I'm sorry. Changing of the product type from tract J, from single-family attached, to single-family detached, also decreasing those units by two in that parcel. The creation of development standards for tract U and single-family detached tract units on tract J. A modification to the development standards for tract T and S, and the proposed minimum lot dimension standards reduced to 40 feet wide by 105 feet deep on all tracks J, S, T, and U included in this proposal. Next slide. Among the proposed changes to the existing Meadow Oaks MPUD conditions of approval is the removal of condition number 11. That required the developer of parcel T to provide a buffer plan that was agreed to upon with the property owner to the east of parcel T. Should the buffer plan not be agreed upon, the condition required that the item be brought back to at the time Development Review Committee and be reexamine for the use of the 45-foot wide lots. At the time, staff recommended denial, identifying the transition of the area as not adequate for the 45-foot lots, yet felt if the parcel to the east, which is zoned agricultural, could agree to a buffer plan, this would be acceptable for the transition. The DRC decided that the buffer plan would be a great opportunity. However, this current application is proposing to remove that condition. I would like to mention that according to our current Land Development Code, when tract T is developed, the tract will be required to establish a 10-foot Type A landscape buffer that consists of a continuous row of evergreen shrubs and trees planted at 60 feet on center, unless relief is sought at the time of preliminary plan review and approval by the applicant through an alternative standard request. Next slide. LDC, Section 402.2C8 allows for the variations from this code to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and the Board during public hearing on any application for an MPUD zoning amendment. This application is seeking relief from Section 901.6D11, the continuation of existing street patterns and street access to adjoining properties. This section requires streets within the proposed development be connected to adjacent areas to provide proper traffic circulation. The current Meadow Oaks MPUD conditions of approval, specifically number 21, allow for private streets within and connecting individual villages only if the streets are not required to provide access to abutting neighborhoods and properties. The developer intends to utilize private streets within the parcels J, T, S, and U. Currently, to the south of parcel U is, proposed parcel U, is the Reserve at Meadow Oaks subdivision with private residential roads. Of those roads, Maryland Court and Neatie Drive abut, and, abut the proposed parcel U. This existing subdivision has access to Fairwins Road, Max Flea Drive subdivision Collector Loop. And the connecting, and the connecting subdivision to proposed parcel U would not benefit from the existing, connecting to the existing transportation network. There are no deficiencies in the existing transportation network that would allow for this connection to alleviate any vehicular trips. The applicant is proposing to connect an emergency access from parcel J to Amberwood Street. This would provide less disruption of the homes that have current access to Amberwood Street, but also provide a benefit during emergency situations. Next slide. Their proposed request has been reviewed and is found to be consistent with the Land Development Code and the applicable provisions of the Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. And this petition comes to you with staff recommendation of approval with the associated conditions of approval included in your packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Are any questions for the staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Cole, I just want to confirm, so the addition of these units does not exceed the original approved number of units for Meadow Oaks, is that correct?
Correct, it actually reduces the total units proposed.
Okay.
Minimally, but it does reduce them.
Sure, thank you.
One quick question, too, on the, the buffer removal for landowner east of parcel T, why is the applicant proposing to remove the, the buffer requirement that was approved by the DRC?
To be honest, I would prefer if the applicant's representatives speak to that.
Okay.
But just to be clear, it's not removing a buffer requirement, it's just removing the condition that would require the applicant developing parcel T to engage with the property owner to the east of parcel T.
Okay.
To agree to a buffer agreement. That's why I wanted to make sure that you understand, according to our current code, unless relief is sought through the alternative standard process at time of preliminary plan review, they will be required to establish the 10-foot Type A buffer that is noted in our code.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I also know in the, the agenda memo that the, the current owner is selling. So yeah, just want to make sure that the, the subsequent owner is...
I have spoken with both, I think he's actually at the kiosk to speak, Mr. Campbell and his potential buyer, actually the realtor for the potential buyer. They've been provided with the information that they've requested about this petition.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I, I do have a conflict on this item, so I will be recusing myself from voting on this item.
Okay, you're reserving comment?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much for your presentation. So the applicant's here, virtually?
The applicant is virtually present, yes. And we do have someone on WebEx, and we also have someone at the kiosk.
Okay, so do we want to ask the applicant if they'd like to speak first, or hold their powder?
So the applicant is Ms. Willhite?
Hello again, Commissioner. Barbara Willhite, we, we would like to hear what the, the comments are, and then we can respond in rebuttal.
Okay, that's good, then we'll go to the, to the public there.
Did you want to go to the kiosk first, or to WebEx?
Let's go to the kiosk first, yeah.
Okay, if Mr. Campbell would please come up?
James Campbell, 13120 Hudson Avenue. I have not been sworn in.
Okay, let's give, let's do that for Mr. Campbell.
Sir, sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak to parcel T, which is to the west of my property, and the 10-foot buffer. My request is to have a PVC fence six foot tall put along the entire west side of my property. East of the, east of parcel T. And that... And that ten-foot buffer should start at my property and then ten feet beyond that should be the PVC fence. I'd also request that the shrubbery be included in that too. I have two reasons for that. First of all, it looks like they're going to reduce the lot size. And second of all, I have a letter in nineteen, two thousand and six from the attorney representing the owners that said, I'll read it. Be that as it may, my client prepared to install a six-foot PVC, a pink fence along the entire easterly boundary of the property. This is in the file of Ms. Coralyn Burns. Also, I don't want any trees cut down on my property line. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions of the speaker before he leaves? Can I ask one question, please? How many feet is his property line that he's talking about? The, can you hear me now? Anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Okay. My question was, your eastern property line that you're referring to, how many feet is that line?
Approximately thirteen hundred.
So it's a quarter of a mile.
Thirteen hundred.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much. All right, and I think we had somebody on WebEx.
Yes, this is Jeff Hobbs with Meadow Oaks Master Association.
Okay.
I have been sworn in.
Thank you, Jeff.
So one of my concerns was the connection into Amberwood and now that it's just an emergency connection, I don't object to that. The community's concern is with traffic. With the connection into Hudson of Max Fly, we believe that the traffic will go up quite a bit. And we were hoping that the county could do something along Fair Winds and Max Fly to help reduce speed of vehicles going through the community. So that's four-way stops or roundabouts, something like that that could help us out. Other than that, the community is not objecting to this change.
All right, Jeff, thank you so much. Are there any questions for Jeff? Okay, if not, can we hear from the applicant?
Sure, this is Barbara Willhite. Trying to reach my client. I don't know if he's on. If he's on, I'm not sure. Maybe he can't answer my phone. So with regards to Mr. Campbell, I would be happy to work with Mr. Campbell. It's a little difficult when somebody just comes to Planning Commission when I send them a letter and they're aware of this, so it makes it a little bit difficult. The difficulty is that Mr. Campbell has a patio and a part of his driveway on my client's property. And so some of his requests with dealing with that is trying to have us have a wider buffer and a fence that starts off of our property line in order to accommodate his encroachment. So the code already sets forth what's required to achieve compatibility between the uses. So it isn't something that we have to try to figure out because the code already says what to do. That being said, I don't mind in between now and the board, you know, discussing with Mr. Campbell and see if an agreement can be reached. But it's not just a buffer because of his encroachment. It makes it a little more complicated from a design standpoint. So, you know, we'd like for the Planning Commission to recommend approval and move forward with the understanding that we will reach out to Mr. Campbell and try to work out what we can do because he does have an encroachment, which needs to be resolved because if not, we're going to remove his patio and remove his driveway. And so there's a lot of opportunity to work together here. Kind of surprised that he chose this forum to engage in a conversation that needs, you know, specific attention.
Okay, he referred, Barbara, he referred to a letter, I guess, from the property owner saying that they would install a six-foot opaque fence. Is that correct?
Yeah, I imagine that's attorney. This is an old, an old project. I imagine that was somebody who represented the project before.
Okay. Well, in any case, I think what's required is that you try to reach a resolution that's satisfactory to all parties and then if not, it reverts to the county requirement. Is that correct?
We're asking for that to be changed. Well, yeah, a ten-foot buffer, true. Yes, we are asking the existing condition to be changed because there's, and that if we don't reach an agreement, that it'd be the land development code requirement for a type A buffer. But again, I think we can work with neighbors directly. There's no basis to, the county's requiring more than ten-foot buffers, because that's what their own code requires. But again, we need to deal with the fact that he's got a property up for sale, under contract, with pretty significant encroachment onto our property. And so we have to deal with both of those and really can't be done in a meeting like this. So...
Okay. Are there any questions, Sharon Adias?
I would like to ask one question. How long has this encroachment been? How many years do you know?
Jamie, do you know?
Yeah.
Jamie's our project manager.
Jamie Girardi, ninety-four hundred River Crossing Boulevard, Suite one oh two. I have not been sworn, so I don't know. Do I need to be sworn?
Yeah, go ahead and swear in, Jamie.
Yeah, please.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Jamie, just note that Jamie's speaking, you know, not as a member of this planning commission on this particular subject.
Yeah, as far as I know, the survey that we received on the property did indicate the encroachment of the driveway and the patio that Barbara referenced. And as far as I know, it was constructed when the house was built, which Mr. Campbell would have to testify on when that was.
No, it's been a considerable period of time.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think Mr. Campbell, if I heard his testimony correct, I mean, what he was asking for was a fence that didn't start on the property line. I mean, he was basically acknowledging that he is encroaching on the property because he mentioned that he would like to have the fence installed ten-foot west of his western property line, which is about the amount that he encroaches onto the applicant's property.
Okay. Okay, well, I think there is a mechanism to resolve it. So if there's, are there any other questions?
I'm being told that Mr. Campbell can say something. I'm not sure if it's allowed, but I think he can answer a question because I think...
Who is this?
Mr. Campbell, who's at the kiosk.
Well, we typically don't allow two bites of the apple. Do you, does anybody want to hear a response from Mr. Campbell?
The reason I asked that question, maybe our attorney, David, can answer it. I was given the impression that if somebody encroaches on property and it's for a number of years, that property therefore can be the individual's property. Is...
I think you're talking about that he would own it by prescription and there's a lot of factors that go into that analysis and we don't have all the facts. But regardless, it's not really relevant to the planning commission's decision here. I mean, you make an decision on what is required for adequate buffering between the two properties, but the encroachment is really a private issue between the applicant and Mr. Campbell.
And Mr. Chairman, I was looking at some old aerials. It looks like it wasn't built with a house. It looks like sometime around two thousand and five, maybe. I'm not sure there weren't other encroachments before then, but it looks like somewhere in that neighborhood.
All right, thanks, thank you very much, Chris.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There was a request by the other citizen for response from the applicant about traffic calming on Max Fly. I think that needs to be addressed by the applicant.
All right. Barbara, would you like to speak to the traffic speed? Primarily the speed issue.
I think he was speaking to you all. He was speaking to you and asking the county for help at the county road. So I understand that there is a process that communities can go through that's spelled out in your code for speed bumps or whatever they're called these days. So I heard it to be a reach out for help with the county.
So Barbara, my understanding though is there's a portion of Max Fly, it's the developer's responsibility to build. So I'm not sure, has it been entirely constructed by the developer?
It has not. We are extending, this is the last phase of Meadow Oaks almost-built-out project and we are extending Max Fly. We're required to extend Max Fly to Hudson Avenue and it will be a county road.
I understand that, but the reason I say it's not entirely a county issue is because in theory, that portion of Max Fly could be constructed by the developer with traffic calming. So that's a developer issue.
Barbara, would it help to put up the MPUD plan? The master plan?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, does somebody at the county, if the county wants us to construct a speed bump on their subdivision Collector roadway, that would be surprising to me. But we can certainly entertain that.
Barbara, to be clear, traffic calming is not always a speed bump. It could be other forms of traffic calming such as roundabouts, chicanes, there's other... And I don't think that the resident was necessarily requesting speed bumps. He was requesting, I think, some type of other design that would slow traffic.
I don't get the impression that the extension of the traffic calming is within their neighborhood, the current neighborhood is where I get the impression that the conversations come from. But what I'd be happy to do is, again, between Planning Commission and VOCC, we can be part of a solution with the community and by developer client and the county, let's sit down with the public workforce and see what can be done. Be happy to do that. I'm not sure we can do that here at a Planning Commission hearing either, but absolutely happy to sit down with the county, the boss association representative, Mr. Hobbs, and my client and see what we can come up with.
Okay. Well, that sounds like a reasonable suggestion. Any other comment from Adias? David, anything from you? If not, I'd like...
No, I don't.
Pardon me, David? No.
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if not, do I hear a motion? There's no further comment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I will second with Ms. Willhite's confirmation that she'll address the issues before BCC.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by roll call?
Jamie Girardi abstaining from the vote. Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Roberto Sais.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to take a five-minute recess, please.
You gotta go upstairs, is that enough?
No, might be seven minutes. Alone Ranger. Can they go for you?
No, you're good. I got a bottle right here.
I'm afraid I'm late.
... The location, as we'll see in a second, is on the south side of State Row 52 between Aaron Karoff, alternatively sometimes known as Collier Parkway Extension, and Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. And the resolution that's before the body today is to provide for a text amendment to the subarea policy as it was noted. Next slide, please. There we go. So before I get into the overall presentation, I do want to talk about some of the items that are before you and what's in your hand to make clear for the public. So what was in the agenda memo for today, or what was in the agenda for today was a placeholder memorandum, and I was going to bring the, a copy of the agenda memo to the Planning Commission as well as the subarea policy itself. And so those handouts have been provided to the Planning Commission. What you have is a version of the subarea policy as it appears today in the comprehensive plan. That one is the clean copy that you might have in your packet in front of you. The date at the bottom says July 25, 2013. The second attachment that you've got in your possession is the draft version, which illustrates all of the edits that we're talking about today. And that one will say draft 32521 at the bottom right corner. And you'll also see the edits in the actual text itself. And I'll go through and we'll walk through those today in short. So the amendment to the policy that you have in front of you today is consistent with policy flu 7112. It's consistent with itself. It's also consistent with policy flu 813, which is the central market area, future land use policy. And of course, it has the EC Employment Center Future Land Use Designation to be consistent with, as well as the CON or Conservation Future Land Use Designation that it must be consistent with as well. Next slide. The map is showing you where Central Pasco Employment Village is located within the county. It's pretty much right in the center. And this is the master plan of the Central Pasco Employment Village. And I want to point out a few of the land uses that are present on the master plan there. The different colors represent different land uses. So red represents the commercial support uses, which include commercial and office. The purple represents target business, corporate business park, and light manufacturing. So three uses there in the purple. The yellow is representative of just corporate business park. The brown is representative of the high-density residential area. The orange is representative of the medium-density residential area. And the peach color is representative of the low-density residential area. So you can see that as a gradation or a step down from east to west, contemplated in terms of densities within CPEV. So the existing subarea policy supports employment generating land uses with workforce housing in close proximity. The mixed-use nature of the current policy is essentially to achieve a job-to-housing ratio of one-to-one with the purpose of phasing requirements to ensure residential development does not preclude employment generating uses from locating within the planning area, to make provision for the residential to not outpace provision of the needed non-residential infrastructure, that's an existing component of the policy, to not restrict the establishment of multimodal transportation network, and to enable critical wildlife habitat preservation in Central Pasco County. The proposed subarea policy maintains these same objectives, but with a change in emphasis on the residential build-out thresholds located at the end of the policy, and we'll get into that when we're at that point in the policy review. The applicant or the petitioner is requesting a couple of amendments to the subarea policy. The first is to enable residential land uses to pre-seed the development of employment generating land uses. And we'll talk a little bit about that in just a few minutes. As well as to establish a service-ready sites initiative in the subarea policy like Connected City, like Connected Cities Service Ready Site Acres requirements. The second is to authorize the increase in the number of limited development and limited development of up to 1,500 single-family detached homes, which increases the percentage of single-family from 20% to 33%. The total residential units allowed in CPEV remains constant, however, at 4,500 units. The third is to remove the Department of Community Affairs, which is a state agency that was disbanded, I believe, in 2010 or 2011. Remove the DCA mandate to impose affordable housing requirements in CPEV, consistent with the elimination of the provision from other similar projects in Pasco County Development Developments of Regional Impact and other MPUDs. And the fourth is to enable a case-by-case MPUD level review to determine the appropriate timing and location for the establishment of Pasco County's school board facilities such as schools. Next slide, please. Yeah, a little too far. Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, no, I apologize. One more. Yeah. So I wanted to put that out forward first so that we can take a look at the future land use map in consideration of what is being proposed here. So the future land use map, the pink is the EC Employment Center Future Land Use. And in general, that constitutes the boundaries of the CPEV planning area there. It's very similar to the master plan map that I just had on the screen. There are agricultural flues to the northwest, planned developments to the north, directly across from CPEV is the Palmetto Ridge Plan Development. Conservation lands to the south and west, RES 1 is to the northeast and to the southwest, RES 3 is to the southeast, and you have IL that is directly to the east, sort of at the nose where Bellamy Brothers and State Row 52 are intersecting.
Excuse me for a second. Could I get a copy of that document? I didn't get a copy.
Yes. Next slide.
Thank you.
And this is essentially the zoning map for the CPEV area as it stands today in general. I'm not going to go entirely through the zoning classifications because this isn't really a land development proposal so much as it is a policy change in the comprehensive plan. But the zoning in CPEV right now is mainly AC and AR5, as well as MPUD at the very far eastern limits of CPEV. Okay, so what I really wanted to do today with the planning committee or the local planning agency is to illustrate that you have a copy of the existing subarea policy before you to compare to the proposed changes. Now, the proposed changes are going to have the edits plus the existing language in there. But I wanted to make sure you had an existing copy of it as well so that you could refer to it without any of the additional editing that was taking place. And what I'll go ahead and do now is I'll walk through, next slide, please, I'll walk through the actual amendments. So what you have in front of you, to be sure, is the official version of the edits. And what I'm showing on the overhead is kind of the behind-the-scenes version of how the document was edited, so you can kind of see what kind of negotiation was taking place. But the actual edits are cleanly provided to you in the packet for you. So in the first edit that appears is not covered on my slide, but it's on A4. And that is essentially the affirmation of the preservation of land and area for employment generating uses within CPEV. And then later on, you see in that first subsection A, item number nine, there's a provision that's added to the subarea policy to include home occupation as a potential for the residents that will live in the employment village itself. The first major edit to the subarea policy itself takes place in section B3. That's what we have showing on the overhead. And I won't go through and read the entire paragraph there, but essentially the main points are to establish a service-ready sites initiative within CPEV, and we'll talk about this later on in subsection F of the subarea policy. It's also to emphasize the construction of infrastructure in preparation for the employment generating land uses, to make sites that are serviceable, that are ready to construct buildings. And then also to allow initial development of residential. This is an affirmative statement here. Actually, if you look at the existing subarea policy in the very end of that document, you'll notice that there's a table that's called the jobs-to-housing ratio at one job per 450 square foot average. The original subarea policy always considered the establishment of some initial residential within CPEV in order to build the square footage requirements that are outlined in that table. So there's a threshold associated with building square footage or building area in the current subarea policy. So in this first section B3, there's confirmation that some initial development of residential is possible, and also importantly, as we'll find in subsection F, that we keep those same existing thresholds that are currently referenced in the subarea policy. Next slide, please. The next major change that's happening within the subarea policy is related to section C4. This is the removal of the affordable housing provision in the Central Pasco Employment Village Subarea Policy. The main points, again here, is that the language itself is not inconsistent with state statutes. The language does appear to be very consistent with the statutes. There are, however, local precedents to remove this language. And in the agenda memo, I go through and discuss what some of those precedents were to remove the affordable housing language then. Because despite the state statute and the potential for a strategy to define whether costs might be offset fully, there have been a number of board-approved DRIs and MPUDs that removed the same affordable housing language from the regulatory documents. The last one was the Wiregrass Development Order, which was adopted by the board in January of 2019. And in that case, the affordable housing mitigation was eliminated until the county could adopt an applicable county-wide affordable housing mitigation ordinance since affordable housing was not being required across the board. Having said that, these are the precedents that are invoked to remove this same language from the Central Pasco Employment Village. However, we do have comments from the community development department that are not in agreement with the removal of the affordable housing provision from the subarea policy, noting that affordable housing is a future or potential component of a pending Pasco County strategic plan. This provision is before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. The county may either strike the provision, consistent with past precedent, or retain the provision that is not in conflict with the state statute, and that can be done as a policy decision. Next slide, please. In section C5, we find the next major change within the subarea policy. This is, the main point of this particular section is to increase the single-family detached entitlements to not exceed more than 1,500 units. So again, as I noted earlier, it's an increase from 20% of the residential entitlements to 33%. And also, the main point of this paragraph is to have the potential to introduce a master land plan allocation formula for single-family detached. Now, the discussion point here that I'd like to make is that there's only a limited supply of single-family detached available within the Central Pasco Employment Village, even with the increase from 20 to 33% here. And so allocation of the single-family detached is important for the fairness of all the various property owners in the development. There are two types of ways that this can be approached. The first way is to consider these on a case-by-case basis and review them each according to the ECMUD or MPUD that is brought in. This is no different than what might occur elsewhere in the county outside of the CPEV area. You'll look at it on an MPUD-by-MPUD basis and determine entitlements at that time. And of course, in that process, it's a public hearing, there's public meetings involved in which neighboring residents or even neighboring property owners may come in and provide their input at that time to be considered. The second way of doing this is to establish a master land plan formula where one might say that no more than 45% of the allocation may be allowed in the high-density area of CPEV. That amounts to about 675 units across approximately 570 acres. No more than 30% of the allocation may be allowed in medium-density areas, so that's about 450 units and approximately across 370 acres. And no more than 25% of the allocation may be allowed in low-density areas, which amounts to about 375 units and approximately 200 acres. So the important thing to note here is that the low-density designated area of CPEV is the most sensitive to the allocation of single-family entitlement because it's limited to the two dwelling units per acre that the master plan was indicating to us. And so it's important to consider that that type of product is available for that low-density area. area. If we follow a formulaic allocation like this, you could get very close to the two dwelling unit per acre, single-family entitlement for the low-density area and still offer or afford single-family entitlements to other property owners. It's been argued previously that this method may be harder to accomplish via a comprehensive plan amendment in other cases, so I do want to bring that up to your attention. The next slide will show us some of the, if we do want to provide a master land plan formula for single-family entitlements, this is the kind of language that you would add within subsection C4 of the subarea policy. And what this is basically illustrating is language that talks about what I just explained. Up to 45% of the single-family detached entitlement may be allocated to the high-density residential area, up to 30% for medium, 25% for the low. And the allocations may be incrementally calibrated to increase up to a maximum of 5% additional allocation on a case-by-case basis. This is so that you can make sure that you reach a balance and that there's some wiggle room involved. And then at such time that the CPEV planning area is fully zoned with ECMUDs, any unused single-family entitlements could also be added beyond the allocations since they may be left over and available for use. And so this language, like I said, could be added to C4. The next major change within the subarea policy is section E3. And what this is, basically a text clarification that's taking place. The language is basically being cleaned up. It's essentially saying the same thing. Actually, I didn't really consider it a major change, but it is a change. Next slide, please. All right. And so this is the next major change within the subarea policy. It's section E6. Here, E6 is talking about school siting. And the main thrust of this provision here is that school siting should be evaluated on a case-by-case basis in MPUD reviews. It's currently not called out how that would happen in the existing subarea policy, other than to amend the map to illustrate or to identify where the school might be sited or where the facility might be sited. Elsewhere in the county, this is typically determined on a MPUD by MPUD basis until such time where thresholds are exceeded for the school district to require a facility from a development. And so this is basically aligning with current practice in terms of what's being done elsewhere in the county. Next slide, please. And then finally, in section F here, there's a couple of edits. The whole section has essentially sort of been redone here. This is the section that's talking about how infrastructure ought to be developed in support of the building areas needed to house the employment generating land uses themselves. Before I get into this section, I do kind of want to go into some of the history of CPEV. The Department of Community Affairs originally imposed this section here to require jobs-to-housing ratio. And at the time, the landowners, as I understand the history, there was opposition to the DCA imposition. And then there was an attempt to mediate between what the state was working to impose and what the landowners were resisting. And so the county at the time proposed a middle ground to establish pad-ready sites. In keeping with that previous effort that the county had to mediate, we're bringing that forward into this proposal such that the thresholds are not entirely deleted from the subarea policy, but they are reworked to include infrastructure to support rather than building the actual shell buildings. And so what you have in this section F is to preserve the economic development potential of those employment generating land uses identified on the master plan by establishing a service-ready sites initiative that's modeled after the service-ready site acreage requirements of Connected City, which is one of the more recent ways in which the county has provided for economic development and essentially creating a prepared area to accept industrial as well as office, corporate business park, and other target businesses and industries. The service-ready sites initiative in CPEV is outlined on the slide. It's outlined A through H, but in your packet, it's 1 through 8, renumbered. But similar to Connected City, an MPUD or an ECMUD would establish the specific requirements for each development, but it would have to meet the criteria outlined in the subarea policy. So CPEV service-ready sites would be flexible, shall be flexible, and enable a mix of non-residential uses in support. This is to capture those red areas that you saw on the master plan. It's going to require a minimum size of a land parcel that will qualify as an SRS parcel. It'll establish limited and prohibited uses within SRS parcels, so every MPUD will be doing this. It'll require the construction of adjacent infrastructure for roadways and utilities to serve the service-ready sites parcels. It'll also expedite a development permitting for mass grading of service-ready sites for future or by future employment users. It'll restrict by deed service-ready site parcels for the reservation and preservation of their economic development potential. This subarea policy is mandating the posting of identification signage on service-ready site parcels, clearly noting the site is going to be a future development for light industrial uses and employment site and require residential users to be notified of those nearby SRS parcels. And also, it'll establish compliance with the provisions of the Land Development Code as a prerequisite for any kind of incentives or credits for that infrastructure to the SRS parcels. Now, on this slide, you can see that the thresholds that are present in the existing subarea policy are still present within the proposed subarea policy. But what this slide is actually talking to now is that rather than requiring a shell building to be constructed or a prospective building or a speculative development occurring, when a residential development moves into CPEV, it must extend the utilities, of course, for itself, but also provide the utility extensions and the roadway access to the SRS parcels in exchange for the dwelling units that are going to be authorized according to these thresholds. So at 700 dwelling units in this case, the initial development would have to build the infrastructure to support a building or buildings that would amount to 315,000 square feet of service-ready site. And then at 2,000, they would have to have infrastructure to support 900,000 square feet, and so on down the table. So the thresholds are still there to achieve what CPEV was contemplating originally, just not with the construction of speculative or shell buildings, but actual pad-ready sites, which is similar to and consistent with other parts, other economic development initiatives in the county. Next slide, please. So the recommended motions that are before the planning or the local planning agency today are on the overhead screen. You have before you the recommended agency action to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of the proposed text amendment to the Central Pasco Employment Village Subarea Policies, Policy Flu 7112, which removes the affordable housing provision in keeping with the precedents that have been set previously. There is also the alternative agency action to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of the proposed text amendment to the Central Pasco Employment Village Subarea Policies, Policy Flu 7112, keeping the affordable housing provision. There is an optional agency action also to recommend including the master land plan formula language that is identified in this agenda memo for single-family detached entitlement allocations. If you don't want to include the master land plan formula, you don't have to have an extra motion because the default would be that those allocations would be reviewed on an MPUD by MPUD basis regardless. And then there's other action that is also available to the local planning agency, which is to recommend denial to the Board of County Commissioners of the proposed text amendment to the Central Pasco Employment Village Subarea Policies, Policy Flu 7112, or to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to direct the planning and development department to another course of action regarding Policy Flu 7112. This will complete my presentation, but I would be happy to take any questions now or after you may have heard from other stakeholders.
Okay. Are there any questions from the desk at this moment?
Terri, it's Jamie Girardi here. Just out of curiosity, I mean, is there a reason why nobody on this board saw any of this information before, like, one minute before the presentation? I mean, you threw a lot at us. I mean, that was a very thorough presentation, but I mean, we don't sit up here and hear 20 or 25-minute presentations very often, the stuff we're expected to vote on, not at least having seen what we're going to vote on before the meeting.
Yep. Yes, so that's kind of why I wanted to walk through on a point-for-point and not do the typical three-minute presentation that we generally have, because we didn't have the opportunity to provide this information to the planning commission sooner. This is a difficult project that has taken us to the wire to provide the information before the local planning agency. It's occurred in other projects, too. This wouldn't be the first time that this sort of difficult project has come before the county and gone all the way to the end. You know, a similar project was Project Arthur that happened like that. But other than to say that this was a very difficult and challenging project to this point, and it was taking us quite a bit of time to work this out and negotiate it with various stakeholders.
Okay. I mean, we continued this item three weeks ago. So I mean, this item was originally advertised to be heard three weeks ago. So then we continued it with the thought, the assumption that we would at least know what we were voting on. I mean, I know just as you were going through your presentation, I've got a list of questions to ask you, but that's without even reading the page after page of text of the agenda memo. I mean, I'm not even sure I could vote on this thing today and have any idea what I'm voting on.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Mr. Girardi. We haven't had a chance to read all this stuff. It's a lot.
I agree, too.
I mean, I guarantee you, if John Gallagher was here at DRC, he'd be jumping up and down.
Well, let's give John a call.
Can I ask a quick question? I agree with what has been said. This is, I can read reasonably well, at least at the grade level that my wife teaches that, and I tried best I could. Two questions I have, basically, over the years, I've sat here, and I mean literally over the years, I've heard nothing about, "We need jobs, jobs, jobs." And on your chart, I wrote down here, because I have a short memory sometimes, basically in section F, proposed text change is to remove jobs for housing. Why would we want to change our jobs for housing? Don't ask me what page that's on. It's way back there. It's in section F, I guess. That's my problem, is you want us to change jobs for housing, when that's what I've always heard about these job centers. In fact, it was a couple of months ago that we had an argument, not an argument, rephrase that, a discussion about job centers and creating jobs versus, and I still don't know what low-income housing is. One of these days, I'll have the courage to ask what that is. But that's where I'm at. If we want, because I see in this community, in this county, housing popping up, and we say, "Well, we need to bring jobs here because we don't want everybody to drive to Hillsborough County or Hernando County or whatever county that they drive to. We want them to stay here in the community." So that's my dilemma.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure why the table is referring to a jobs-to-housing ratio, other than that the Department of Community Affairs approached it in this way. But the net effect of what that table was doing was establishing a housing-to-building square footage ratio, not necessarily jobs, per se. But I will say that, you know, identifying a job-to-housing ratio within a comprehensive plan is typically not done when such ratios are offered as regulatory requirements, which is pretty much what's in the existing subarea policy. They're often articulated in specific development agreements that are related to a particular project. You don't really see jobs-to-housing ratios within comprehensive plans because these are aspirational concepts and not specific. What would happen at the end of the day if a project did not have the jobs-to-housing ratio that the comprehensive plan is calling for? Is it a bad project? Is it inconsistent with the comprehensive plan at that point? So that's one reason why you don't see a jobs-to-housing ratio specifically in comprehensive plans. Do they exist out there? From time to time, they do. But in this case, this was really a housing-to-building square footage ratio.
I wasn't fair to you. Basically, what I thought, this map that I ran off at home before I came here today, I thought this was going to be like a jobs location. And I know that when you said jobs-to-home ratio, I meant like outside of this area. Well, the way I interpreted what you said was that they were going to be homes replacing jobs in here. But I see people, I see homes being developed throughout the county, and so I see people can drive to work, or if there's public transportation to this location, that even works out well. But the other question I have, too, and I wrote it down, I have a question mark, are, what did you mean by homework in here? Does this mean that somebody will have a home in this community and then they do homework there? I'm not sure what kind of homework they would, not homework like studying. I mean, they would build things or develop something or create a particular product.
Home occupation.
Home occupation, it could be, you know.
Yeah, home occupation. There's a, and the Land Development Code identifies a number of different types of home occupations. But it's basically those small, very small business operations that people can do outside of their house, either through special exceptions. In some cases, they can get special exceptions. In other cases, I suppose they're permitted. It just depends on the use.
Yeah, minor home occupation, which is basically they're just using the internet or there's no foot traffic to the house, that is allowed by right in all zoning districts. Some of the times you see them here before the planning commission is when there's trip generation. So there's traffic, you know, either through specific, you know.
Deliveries.
Not deliveries by appointment to the house.
Yeah, I can understand that type of thing, but if you get, there's a book that Department of Labor puts out that describes jobs and that type of thing. But I would have a hard time putting a home business in this type of community, because what you want is you want manufacturing or you want some type of, some type of business that would create jobs. That's what the county needs, is jobs and decent-paying jobs.
At the same time, I think, you know, it's called the Central Pasco Employment Village. The idea being that you live in close proximity to where you work, part of that employment village concept. And then, of course, in a post-COVID-19 world, where pretty much any and every house has become a local home occupation because people don't have to work remotely, where better to insert home occupation than in a mixed-use employment village? I suppose that would be the argument. But to clarify, one comment I made earlier, Mr. Chairman, right, I was talking about jobs-to-housing ratio. I do want to point out that, as I noted, it was a housing-to-building square footage ratio that the subarea policy is actually talking to. But the ratio is still there. The thresholds, as I just illustrated in the presentation, are still present, so the ratio of single-family homes to the number of square feet of building is still present. The difference is, rather than having a shell building constructed by, say, a residential developer, you have a pad-ready site that enables an employment-generating land user to come in and construct the building of their choice. Or a speculative office builder, for example, to come in and build what they want to build on that particular site. on that particular site. So the ratio is still there. We haven't eliminated the ratio. It's just changed in, in the way it's being articulated.
Okay, and are there any other questions for, for Terry right now? Or I think we have some other people that want to speak, right? Let Terry off the hook for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have someone who is at the public comment kiosk, Mr. Scaglione.
Okay.
And then.
Mr. Chair, you should hear from the applicant first.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You need to, you need to give the applicant an opportunity to speak first.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Joel Tu, Tu and Associates, Palm Harbor, Florida. And along with my colleagues at Hype Design, we represent the property owner who is the applicant. This is a property owner of a portion of the Central Pasco Employment Village, albeit a, a large portion. It is the Swope family, their various family entities. Dale Swope is their family representative. He's on business, legislative business in Tallahassee today, but we're speaking on behalf of his family. And if I may, let me just address the concern that the Planning Commission members have expressed. Obviously, we disagree with you about asking you to vote on something that has this many pages and of significance that just hit your desk. So I want to proceed here today with your permission, but I would, I would say that I think it'd be prudent for you to hear the applicant, for you to hear any public members that are here to speak. But we're certainly not going to resist if you decide you need to then continue this to the next meeting on April 1st to give you time to go through the documents. Perhaps we reconvene then, and you ask any detailed questions. But I think there are already some misperceptions from just the comments I've heard. So before you go off in the wrong direction, in our opinion, we would like an opportunity to present the matter. And just as to the predicament we're in, PDD needs to plead me a copa a little stronger here. As Mr. Girardi pointed out, we were on the March 4th agenda. We had a recommendation of approval. We had received no, we, we thought that we had complete agreed subarea policies, that there were no questions. I was called very shortly before that meeting that there were some late, last-minute questions. We agreed to that continuance. We've worked feverishly. We've agreed on revisions. This application's been pending for eight months, and then all of a sudden, there's this flurry at the end to get things, in, in PDD's view, correct. So what I'm saying is, please don't hold it against the property owner or the applicant. This is not his doing, as the predicament you're in, but we certainly understand it. But with that said, I, I want to stress one thing, and then I'm going to turn it over to Pat Gasaway to present the application. But getting to Mr. Hanson's point, and this is what I was concerned about, if this isn't approached historically and properly, the first conclusion is, wait a minute, you're replacing jobs with housing. Nothing can be further from the truth. That's simply not factually correct. This land was master-planned and approved by the, this commission and the board, and it has specific land areas that are reserved and allocated exclusively to the employment jobs. It has specific land area that is exclusively committed to the residential portion. This proposed amendment does nothing. It does zero to alter the land that is absolutely restricted for employment versus housing. All it does is recognize that the Department of Community Affairs, which has since been abolished, at the time this was originally approved, it would not approve this plan without literally tying home construction to someone going out there, investing tens of millions of dollars, building empty shell office buildings, having no user, and hoping they would eventually show up. Well, that requirement has left us exactly where we are, with a vacant piece of cow pasture out there, and not the first bit of development. So all we're saying is, that, that has not been required in Connected City. It's not been required in villages of Pasadena Hills. It has never been required by Pasco County anywhere in this county to go build a speculative shell office building before you can build a house. So just to get everyone back on track, we're not changing, we're not increasing any housing density. There were 4,500 units approved here originally. We still will have 4,500 units. All we're doing is taking a portion of those potential multifamily units. This thing was heavily tilted toward apartments and multifamily. We're taking a portion of that to allow more single-family, which at least one of your county commissioners is going to be delighted about, and probably more. We're not changing the total residential units. We're not detracting any from the employment jobs. We're simply saying that you're not going to build empty speculative buildings, but we are going to require that, that residential developer that comes in to start just on the residential portion, just with the previously approved units, he's going to have the rough size and build the roadways and utility infrastructure so that we have lines and roads adjacent to those industrial and corporate sites, so that if you do then find a user, they don't have to wait and bring that utility. So that's what's going on here. I just wanted to provide you that background so that we don't get off on the wrong tangent. But if you're willing, I'll shut up. I'm going to ask Pat to give you our overview. And then my suggestion, obviously is your prerogative, is that we hear, we hear the public comments, and then we, we continue this to the next meeting. If you need time to digest the documents, and then possibly come back and ask follow-ups to Terry or to us, because obviously, we need to get you comfortable with this. And I don't want anybody going off half-baked with, with inaccurate information. That's certainly none of your fault.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tu. We have Pat Gasaway then speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Pat Gasaway. I'm with Hype Design at 5904 Hampton Oaks Parkway in Tampa, representing the applicant. We, we were actually the, the authors of the, of the first comprehensive plan amendment when we were representing over a dozen property owners within this particular area. Back in 2008, the, the history is, has been properly recounted by, by Terry, even, even though he didn't have the luxury of going through the agony of dealing with DCA. The, the original, let's see if I can give you a little bit of info here. Looks like I'm, could, could I share my screen with the, with the rest of the board?
Yes, if it's fine with me, if you know how.
I, I think I do.
All right.
I think I'm going to go over here to the... Okay. Now, does everybody, does everybody see my screen now? It's the Central Pasco Employment Village illustrative plan from the original comprehensive plan amendment that was approved back in, in 2010.
Yes, I think.
Does everybody, everybody see that? Okay, great. The, the idea back then is exactly the same. That the notion is to be able to bring light industrial, target business, office complexes here to this particular location, and, and close proximity into this landmass wedged between State Road 52 and the Cypress Creek Well Field, to be able to have various types of residential units to provide close workforce. In, in that regard, the, the land plan was structured in a way such that the major infrastructure, this east-west collector road, as well as these two north-south collector roads, would be able to provide the requisite infrastructure and utility corridors to support, to support the entirety of the development plan. The area was, was very complex to attempt to plan because, of course, the Cypress Creek Well Field has a bunch of wells in it, and those wellfields have five-year and 10-year travel times that, that radically affect the allowable uses within it. You'll see on these landplans, these, these dash lines, those are the five- and 10-year travel time envelopes for the most closely located wells. Inside those areas, you, you cannot build industrial uses, but you can build office uses, and residential is an allowable use in all of those wellfield exclusion zones. So the, the nature of the land plan was, was, it's simply put, to create a parallel reliever to State Road 52 and have the, the residential uses where residential uses were allowed, and to force light industrial and the office uses into those areas that would not adversely affect the, the wellfield protection zones. All of those acreages associated with those uses are preserved by the mandate to have all of the MPUDs that will subsequently come, they must conform to the master plan. This is a wildly important thing to understand, because this ends up with hundreds of acres of target business and light manufacturing as a preservation area inside this landmass. In other areas like the Connected City, those are not mandated. They are negotiated on a MPUD by MPUD basis. Here, very differently, all the MPUDs must subscribe to this master plan. Consequently, we can predictably expect in, on the, on the screen, those purple manufacturing areas and those yellow office building locations are going to be what the future development plans provide. That is extraordinary. And again, I can tell you, th, this is an extraordinary amount of acreage that is dedicated from the inception to those job-growth-building uses. So all of those things are solidified. You know, the, in this particular example, this is where we've brought the, the overall master plan into GIS to be able to do some of these calculations. You see outlined in yellow here, the perimeter of the Swope property. In essence, it's about 30% of the landmass located almost in the geographic center of the CPEV landma, landmass. So when, when we think about the, the things that Terry talked about, and by the way, that was an extraordinarily well-thought-out and well-presented summary of the application. I think the, the key points are, are well-articulated in, in Terry's presentation, very, very briefly. You know, the idea of, of having 1,500 maximum single-family detached units within all of the residential areas within CPEV is an item that is included here. We believe that that's an, an important part of providing a variety of, of mixed-use residential product to support those that will want to live in close proximity to their jobs. When, when we look at the, the affordable housing language, to, to me, that's, that's really quite a relatively minor point, since that language has been taken out of almost all of the large DRIs that I've worked on in Pasco County, and we've taken it out of the villages of Pasadena Hills, and it, it is, it is specifically not included in the Connected City language that we most recently adopted in January. So I, I think it's a very common practice to, to eliminate that language from these large entitlement approvals. And then lastly, you know, when, when it gets to the, to the notion of, you know, jobs-to-housing, the, the most important thing that we need in Pasco County is not empty buildings. The thing that we need are pad-ready sites with roadways and utilities such that the users can come in and have exactly what we want. Imagine if we had arbitrarily 10 years ago built a building that was the wrong size for Amazon. We would have certainly not seen any activity there. They have very specific uses, and the uses have very specific needs of those buildings. We'd never anticipate them, and we'd never properly plan to have those as enticements to have those companies come. They'd have to pass. The buildings wouldn't meet their needs. A far more thoughtful consideration is to say, let's, let's blend the residential and the non-residential, and have the residential preceded such that it allows the residential development to bring those roadways, those water lines, and those sewer lines that will ultimately serve all of those non-residential job-growth uses. In fact, in this particular application, we actually have a chart that allows the, the residential developers to understand the thresholds by which they need to accommodate those non-residential uses with the master-planned infrastructure that will ultimately support all of the uses in the CPEV area. The, the only thing that, that Terry suggested to you that I would, I would caution you about is the notion of a formulaic methodology for determining how much single-family detached is in each of these landmasses. In, in Terry's discussion, I mean, we've been working on this job since 2008, so I'm pretty familiar with it. At, at two units per acre for low-density, 12 units per acre for medium-density, and 24 units an acre for high-density, we would probably more than double the allowable residential units. So the, the notion of, of trying to look at the overall, at, at densities that, that he was, you know, alluding to, I think is very dangerous, because what we've discovered is there's a lot of floodplain, and a lot of wetlands, and a lot of infrastructure that has to be fit within these individual, specific sites. So I'm a much, a much stronger believer in being able to look at the specific constraints of each MPUD as they come in, by the way, as the applicant can afford to do all of the detailed investigations that are necessary to, to properly allocate the uses, and still conform to that maximum 1,500 and, and subscribe to the maximum 4,500 units of residential development as a part of a cohesive, mixed-use master plan on all 2,400 acres of the CPEV landmass. These things were contemplated back in 2008. We argued with DCA for a couple of years, and I can safely say it's the only time that Dave Goldstein and I were actually arguing in the same direction against someone else. The, the necessity of, of thoughtful contemplation as each MPUD comes along, I believe, is the wisest move. I mean, I, I recognize it's not a matter before the board today, but, you know, when we look at, at the MPUD plan that is coming to, in support of this comprehensive plan, you can see here on the screen, let me blow it up just a bit, I mean, the, the non-residential manufacturing uses here that are in accordance with the, the master plan, the support retail and office, and the high-density multifamily are all consistent with the master plan. When, when we look further, we can see that, this is an illustrative plan, one of the things that come in as a byproduct of, of the MPUD at, at the next step. But you can see, you know, we have a lot of, of wetlands on these sites. We have a lot of floodplain on these sites, and managing those things are the things that can only be thoughtfully considered when we get to a more detailed level of information at the MPUD level. Just as, as a precursor to what will be, what will be coming in the future with this MPUD, you see the non-residential uses, all in conformance with the master plan. These... These vision roads that support the entirety of the development pattern would be the things that are constructed to access the residential uses that are located south of that east-west master plan roadway. So I guess, in summary, I'd say Terry got it right. The summary is on point. The master plan that controls the development pattern preserves these job growth uses, and the table that ties residential to the square footage of non-residential is a marvelous guide to the amount of master-planned infrastructure that must be accommodated as these master plans for these MPUDs come fit for you in an incremental way. In, you know, in rough numbers, you know, these kinds of densities that we're talking about, you know, the Swope property as a subset of the CPEV, you know, it's about 30% of the landmass, and they're talking about, you know, about 30% of the of the single-family detached, and they're talking about 30 to 35% of the single-family attached. You know, in my world, you know, Pasco County has three types of residential. You've got multifamily, you've got single-family attached, which are everything from duplexes, triplexes, quads, newer product that you're seeing, as well as the good old standard townhouse units. And then above and beyond that, we drop down to our lowest-density, single-family detached component. So when we think about an overall strategy of being able to attract the people who are going to want to work in close proximity to these job growth uses, we'd like to make sure that we have the flexibility on an MPUD basis to be able to incorporate all three types of those residential uses in the smartest way to appeal to the market. I know that's a lot, all at one time, but I think if you have any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to address them at this point.
Okay, are there any questions?
I do have a question. So I have a question.
Is that you, David?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I can't see you, so, all right.
So can you see me now, or?
No, not yet.
Yeah, Pat, if you would stop sharing your screen, please.
Oh, wash your hand. Let's see. So then.
Okay, we got it.
There we go, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I guess it's a question for both Joel and Pat. So to sum up everything you said, are you in agreement with all of the text amendments as presented by Terry, except for the language that allocates the single-family by formula? Is that an accurate statement of what you support?
Yeah, let me clarify that. We are, yes, we are in 100% agreement with Terry on the actual text of the sub-area policy amendments that he has provided to the LPA today. But if you look, if you look at his recommendation page in his PowerPoint or in his memo, what we support and agree 100% with is what he has labeled as the recommended agency action. So his actual recommendation, we agree with Terry. What we don't agree with Terry is we don't agree with the alternative agency action, which would keep the affordable housing provision that has been deleted in every other project I've ever worked on in Pasco County and everyone else's. So we don't agree with his alternative agency action, and we do not agree with the optional agency action that recommended this predetermined land use allocation formula because, as Pat said, nobody's smart enough right now to know what that formula should be, and the only way to figure out that allocation is to do a site-specific MPUD. So in short, we support the recommended agency action, which is exactly the proposed sub-area policies that Terry gave you because he did not include the alternative agency action, and he did not include the optional agency action in those SATs.
Okay, so I guess I need to ask Mr. Pito's a question then. Is he making a recommendation? I mean, it's pretty clear that he is recommending removal of the affordable housing provision, I can, from the language. Is he making any recommendation whatsoever on the entitlement allocations for single-family?
I'm illustrating, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Niktarius Pito's planning development. I'm, in the agenda, I'm illustrating how one might approach single-family allocations. I provided two options. One was to do it on MPUD by MPUD basis. Another way where it's been done is this master land plan formula language. Both have their limitations, one is preferred more often than the other. I added it as an optional action if it was the pleasure to the local planning agency to make that kind of consideration. If I, the recommended agency action is the first one that's on the list because it's consistent with way, with past precedent, and so if I'm consisting with past precedent as well in the case of the allocations, it would be with the first option, the MPUD by MPUD review basis.
All right, Terry, thank you.
That answers my question, thank you.
Okay, is anyone else here to speak for the applicant?
We do, Mr. Chairman, Joel Tu again. If you'll indulge us for just one or two more minutes, we have Bill Eschenbaum, who, as you know, is a reputable and experienced land broker here in Tampa Bay and specifically in Pasco County. I've asked Bill to provide his market and industry insights on this job-to-housing speculative empty-building item.
All right, Joel?
So just for the record, there's eight minutes left.
Is this your last speaker?
Yes, sir, and after Bill, we will reserve any time to rebuttal after the public comments.
Okay, we have a total of about seven minutes left.
Yeah, Bill's only going to take a couple, thank you.
Okay. Bill, are you there?
Is Bill William Eschenbaum or Esch?
Eschenbaum.
Joel, we need to promote someone, is it William Eschenbaum?
Correct.
Mr. Eschenbaum, if you would provide your name to the record.
Oh, good, it's William Eschenbaum, I was panicked because I thought I wasn't ever going to get on. I'm president of Eschenbaum Land Company. We're at 304 South Willow Avenue, Tampa, Florida, and I was sworn early on this afternoon when I was on the screen. I've had the listing on his property since January of 2020. First couple of months had some activity, and then we went into the COVID period. During that first couple of months, it was all residential, either builders or residential developers. COVID shut us down, March, April, May, June, July. The homeowners started to show up in August to September a little bit. Had a contract presented in October, couldn't quite get it done, got another one done in December, and was able to announce in January of this year, a year later, I had an area under contract to a builder subject to all the approvals required. And since then, I've been able to modify my materials and go out to the market to look for that user. And as an example, yesterday, I had a user in here who spent 10 years with Amazon. He was a lawyer, was on their staff in the real estate department. He thought, wow, I kind of like this, it's close to the interstate. Having others who've been here and driven from the interstate back and forth to determine timing, but the one question that keeps coming up is, where's the housing? Are the houses coming before the, here so we have people to support the machinery, operate the forklifts, operate the trucks and so forth that we might have in distribution or work in the offices as we get out here? And I've shared with the rest of my team, I have another one in Wildwood with a landowner that has three properties, all distribution from 100 to 270 acres. We've actually taken one that was being rezoned, it's for half-residential, for the same reason. Our people show up and they look, the turnpike, I-75, 301, and County Route 44, and it's still the same question. We don't have any housing here other than the villages near Wildwood. So it's a pretty heavy dynamic driver to have the, have housing close by so we have these workable, walkable communities. So that's, I'll turn it back to Joel here, and I didn't say hello, Mr. Chairman, and good to see you again, I haven't seen you in a long time, but.
You too, Bill.
Nice to see you, and thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, it is Joel. I'm going to close my initial presentation by reading a brief statement from my client, who, as I said, is own legislative business in Tallahassee, but Dale Swope asked me to tell you that, and I quote, "On my industrial land, I have no greater aspiration than to find an end-user to build it for jobs. But for the past 30 years, I have solicited those industrial and office users, and I've had no interest." But now that we have a contract with Lennar to start some residential and to bring the roadways and the utilities beside the industrial sites, we now get an inquiry every week from people who have end-users to create jobs. We can wait another 30 years, or we can proceed with the residential portion, get Lennar to build the utilities and roads, and then find us a job producer in the next 12 months. Those are our options. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. I believe we have some other speakers, do we not?
We do have a speaker, we have Ray Gad, who's on WebEx. I also do have two items that were requested to be read into record.
Okay.
I do also want to say that this room is needed at 4 o'clock for Citizens Academy, so we're kind of, you know, running on time, so just wanted to put that out there.
Well, I don't think anybody else has requested extra time, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so well, let's keep close track of time and we can maybe get to the end here.
And that's right, we do have Mr. Scaglione, I forgot to mention, well, I did mention that earlier, he's at the kiosk as well. So just let me know which order you want to do, and that way we'll get folks through the process.
Why don't we hear from the people that are here first, and then with the available time left, we'll read into record.
Okay, let's have Mr. Scaglione, please.
Andy Chisca, good afternoon. 3802, excuse me, early, I've been. I'll hit the high points and make this kind of brief. The two main contentions here I have here is the planning, the timing of the jobs, and allocation of residential entitlements. So I have not been involved in any of the negotiations as of yesterday, was the first time I had talked to Terry, so I would have liked to have been involved in that early on, especially after this application was filed back in August, and the first time I heard about it was when I got a letter dated February 17. But anyway, the property. I have 211 acres, also, the abutting property owner couldn't make it because of COVID, he had to cancel at the last minute. The EDC has this site ranked as number one, and it's a very, very unique site, being right off on Highway 52, the amount of land you have, and being right out of 75. I think it's very, very short-sighted to pile in residential before the jobs come in. Right now, currently, 700 houses, when you look at the phasing on the last page, 700 jobs, 700 units are allowed to go in before, at the next level is 315,000 square feet. That is not a very high threshold, 315,000 square feet. These properties, in 2008, since last, we were in the Great Recession, none of these properties have been listed until 2020. So to say that there's been no activity, Pasco County is on fire, especially when it comes to distribution. I've been in the state for 35 years now, and Pasco County is on fire. So a corporate business park creates close to 11,000 jobs in this area, and as Tampa Business Journal said, let's shed the bedroom community stereotype of the past years because we've been so heavily focused on residential. Pasco time has become of age. So again, where I'd like to really hit on is that on the last page, you have infrastructure to support. That is a very, very huge, big problem for me because infrastructure is actually a joke because that just means you have a pad. What we need is some buildings to go out there, and once you have the buildings, because if the residential comes in, you allow all the residential to come in, these buildings will never come, the square footage. Again, Pasco deserves better, especially for our children and for jobs, and I thank you for serving and taking times out of your family and business, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Anthony, appreciate that. Who's next?
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting for the next speaker, does he notice public hearing? And so if the Citizens Academy needs to wait, they just need to wait. I don't want you cutting off people's public comments because this room is needed by Citizens Academy. So you need to complete the public here. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, next?
Next, we have Ray Gad.
Mr. Chair, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. And if I may, Bill Cronin is not able to be present, and I would like to read his statement and then make a comment about it. Regarding Agenda Number Six, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Central Pasco Employment Village, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments to the Central Pasco Employment Village Subarea Policy, FLU 71.12, the Pasco Economic Development Council is not in favor of the proposed text amendment to master plan, which would allow for residential entitlements to be used prior to the fulfillment of employment center requirements. The Central Pasco Employment Village was the highest-ranked site for industrial development in the Pasco Ready Sites Program, and activating the site with residential development prior to the industrial development would deter industrial developers and site selection consultants from including the site in their selection process. As the official economic development agency for Pasco County, it is important to mention that there are over 16,000 economic development agencies in the U.S., and they are all competing for these projects simply by having residential already in place. That CPEV may be justification for Pasco to be cut from the project candidate pool for fear of public protest or encroachment slash buffering issues. It is also important to mention that residential development has a negative impact on property tax revenues if we do not have the industrial and commercial tax base to offset the loss. Please deny the request for text amendment to ensure that employment center entitlements are satisfied. First, thank you, Bill Cronin. My final comment about this, in my position as Deputy Superintendent of Schools, is that the school district supports policies that ensure when kids graduate from high school that they can get jobs, or when they return from college that they can get jobs, and we support policies that ensure robust economic development. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you, Ray.
Gad, would you please state whether you were sworn in, please?
Ray, were you sworn? Ray, were you sworn? Ray Gad, are you there? Ray, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, have you been sworn, Ray?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have not.
All right, I thought you were getting sneaky on us. Raise your right hand.
I'll do it.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you gave was the truth, so help you God?
I do, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, is anybody else?
No, but we do have two letters to be read into record. One of them was read by Mr. Gad, but I do want to say that that comes from Bill Cronin, who is the President and CEO of the Pasco EDC, and that's 16506 Point Village Drive, Suite 101, Lutes, Florida, 33558. The following one, if you would time me, is from Rob Park, 9614 Aaron Cutoff Road, Land O' Lakes, Florida. Good day for this project, even the whole corridor from the Suncoast Parkway to I-75. I would like for all of you to try to envision something different. I am no artist, I wish I could draw something up for you, but for now, imagine this. Look in front of you and see the box, the box that has the employment center, the retail, the apartments, et cetera. Now look outside the box and see State Road 52, running one-way east, bound on the south of the box, and one-way westbound on the north of the box. On each side of Aaron Cutoff and Bellamy Brothers, envision long sweeping U-turns, far enough apart to allow merging. Think of the U-turns as rotaries on steroids. Now see that there are no stoplights, there would be no need. All the connecting roads would turn right and then follow a U-turn as needed. Inside the box, there could be a central corridor from one end to the other for people to move, people mover of type. The possibilities are endless, but if you proceed with the proposed plan, you are just going to have another State Road 54 and 56. What is the planning of that? Rob Park.
All right, you made it in the time allowed. All right, was there anyone else needed to speak?
That's all we have.
Okay, and I think the applicant wants out of time, right?
They had about five minutes left.
About five minutes the applicant has.
Okay, so Joel Tu, do you have any rebuttal?
Yes, sir, I will, I'll be very brief. We are not adding any residential units to this project. If Mr. Cronin and Mr. Gad or anyone else had a problem with their being residential next to industrial and corporate, why did the county approve the Central Pasco Employment Village, by definition to be a mixed-use community? Everyone always knew, the whole concept was we had a live-work-play village, as Terry said, and Terry will tell you, ask Terry if he thinks you need this residential adjacent to these employment uses. He will tell you, yes. All we're doing is, in the original approval, out of the 4,500 residential units, only 900 of them could be single-family. All the others had to be multifamily. We're simply asking to make an adjustment there, which, as I said, is certainly going to make your county commission happy if some of the multifamily is shifted to single-family. We already know that story. So point number one, that's all we're doing, that's all we're doing on the residential side. Flipping to the business side, I would like Mr. Gad or Mr. Cronin to tell me with a straight face, because I know them well and they're smart men, tell me with a straight face that they know anyone, including themselves, who's going to reach in their piggy bank and go build these spec industrial buildings without having a user. None of you on this commission are ready to pony up in my LLC to go make that investment? It was an insane requirement from the state. Mr. Goldstein, if you ask him, I believe Mr. Goldstein will tell you that that imposition was forced on us, the county opposed that imposition with us, the county disagreed with DCA. The county has mandated infrastructure, and no other project is set aside, the quantity of land for jobs, and now if you approve this, we'll be obligating the residential developers to pre-build that infrastructure to support those jobs. Lastly, this page is short-sighted to have residential before employment. The employment, jobs always follow the rooftops. That's always the case, you heard Bill Eschenbaum tell you that. Those of you who are in the real estate business, you know that. So, the long and short of it is, I don't know why Bill and Ray are opposing this, it makes zero sense to me. Mr. Cronin has had over 10 years, if he's right, then why hasn't he produced users out there? If you don't need residential, why hasn't he located those users and put them on this site? The answer is because there's no infrastructure, he doesn't have roads and utilities. He's not going to write the check to build them, the county's not going to write the check to build them, but we have a residential developer who will start writing the checks to build them. So unless Ray, or Bill, or Andy Scaglione want to build that infrastructure, their great idea is dead in the water and going nowhere, as it's gone nowhere for over 10 years. So that's all we have to say about their objections, other than being very, very disappointed in all their objections.
Okay, I think a strong letter is to follow on that one. Anybody else?
Ray will get his, Ray will get his letter tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Denise?
That's all we have.
Okay. All right, having heard the presentations of all the parties, do we still have a recommendation for continuance?
Yes, this is Jamie Gerardi, and I think that a lot of valid points have been made on both sides. Again, I just go back to the fact that we only got this thing right before the hearing. So, I mean, with that in mind, and I know the schedule's kind of complicated things, in my opinion, a little bit here, I don't even know if continuing, I'm going to make a recommendation for continuance, but I don't know if continuing it to the next meeting, which is only seven days from now, is even adequate. I mean, Joel, would you be in opposition to, if I made a motion to continue to the, I think the next meeting's on the 22nd of April?
No, Mr. Gerardi, as long as Terry promises me, because we've also filed the MPUD, as long as he promises me that staff will continue the MPUD review, then your deferral to April 22nd won't affect us at the end of the day, because obviously, we're not done until we get the MPUD done. So if you feel like you need that time, I want the commission to be comfortable with it, so we don't object to that.
Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're sufficiently far in the subarea policy discussion where the MPUD can be submitted. I'll coordinate with staff on that aspect of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, yeah, I mean, with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to continue this to the April 22nd meeting in Newport Ritchie.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a point that, you know, I can speak for Mr. Gad somewhat, I can't speak for Mr. Cronin, but Mr. Gad's not opposed to having residential here. The issue is that they are changing the text amendment to allow residential prior to any employment uses. Connected City Epperson Ranch is supposed to do that, and I don't really see a lot of those kind of uses out there either, so I think you could argue both sides, and I would love to, and I hope we have Mr. Cronin here on the 22nd to hear his viewpoint, I'd like to hear that.
Very good.
With all respect, Mr. Chairman, that's not factually correct. I would like David Goldstein to answer the question of whether residential already is allowed to proceed before the other elements. Ask David that question.
Well, I think we've had everybody make their presentation, so I don't want to go back and rehash something. We have a motion on the floor, and I believe we have a second, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And we've had discussion from the dais. Any further discussion from the dais? Okay, so we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. All in favor or opposed by roll call, signify by a roll call vote.
Jamie Gerardi?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Roberto Siz?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray?
Aye.
Okay, just a quick announcement?
Yes.
We're back, April 1st, which is next week, Thursday.
You're joking, right?
Pasco County Courthouse. It is not an April Fool's joke, so we are meeting a week from today, just wanted to let you know, I know it's back-to-back, but it's real, it's not a joke.
But the location, you're tricking us on the location.
Not tricking you on location, Dade City, historic Pasco County Courthouse, Dade City.
April 1st, Dade City, okay. Very good, any other questions? All right. If not?
Jamie Gerardi, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Chris Williams, oh, neither one.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater, most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, contact Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Pasco County government is thrilled to be recognized as a top workplace for 2021. Our focus, people, purpose, performance. With a culture of caring for and serving our own people, empowering them to fulfill our overall purpose, to serve our community to create a better future, Pasco County has become a better place to live, work, and play. Pasco County, local government reimagined.